Okay. Hi, it's Jerry Roberts and we're here this morning with Laura Capps, President of the Santa Barbara School Board, which last night hired a new superintendent. Thanks for being with us this morning.
Hey, thanks. That was a fun night last night.
Yeah, you seemed, you all seemed to be having a good time. And I know some sexist writer even said you were nearly giddy, but that was because of all of the sexism being thrown around about all woman government. So Hilda Maldonado is the new superintendent. You interviewed like 50 people. What was it about her specifically that emerged, that made her emerge from the pack?
She just checked all the boxes. What I was looking for personally was somebody who could come in ready to roll on day one with this pandemic, because that's our new reality. And what Los Angeles Unified School District, LAUSD, is doing is phenomenal. They're really setting the bar of innovation. I mean, they've fed 21 million meals to families and students who need it. They're just breaking the mold in terms of how we deal with this pandemic and move in a bold way and innovate. And as she liked to say in her interview, you can't, what is it, the phrase? Analysis by paralysis doesn't work right now. And so she was just so impressive with the plans. And she's really at the helms of what, at the helm of what they're doing in terms of reaching the community right now, in terms of getting technology into households, in terms of getting meals into households. That's her job. And she spoke so eloquently about what the last several weeks have been like and kept using this phrase that we get bogged down and we just got to make it plan. And if the plan shifts, which it will, then we got to readjust. So she was really impressive on the pandemic front. And I think she'll bring a lot of that right here, beginning today. On the community front, I mean, her job as Associate Superintendent in LA is community partnerships. And our community is so strong. We have so many nonprofits, as we well know, that are just eager and already willing and already involved in our schools. And I think she'll really harness that energy and those offers of involvement and really help us again in this new time. And then the last thing is her life story and our biggest challenge. And as a board, we've identified our biggest challenge is equity and the fact that we have such a big achievement gap. And that's been her life story as an immigrant, coming to this country as an 11-year-old, not knowing English and learning it through our schools and having such a positive experience that it inspired her to become a bilingual teacher. And that's been her life's work. So those three needs that I see so clearly with the pandemic, with the community involvement, with English learners and achieving, improving the achievement of all of our students, I feel like she'll be, I know, I believe she'll be the leader for this new moment.
All right. I want to talk about each of those, but let me just ask you about the process just for a minute.
Sure, yeah.
This was, we believe, the first time a school superintendent was recruited, interviewed, hired and introduced, all on Zoom. So were all of the interviews were on Zoom? In other words, the process really geared up after the shutdown?
Oh, for sure. And we didn't just declare, but we didn't interview 50 people. That's how many candidates there were. But yeah, we, I had a lot of worries about it that, you know, it's hard to really get to know somebody over Zoom, but it's what we had to deal with. And so all of them were, we spent, I mean, everyone is right now, but we spent hours and hours on Zoom with these candidates, with each other as a board and in these special meetings late at night, all weekend, one weekend, literally, you know, eight hours a day, one weekend when we interviewed. We got down to the kind of the final, final group. So we'll see. I mean, you know, you like to as a school board. This is the most important job we have is to pick a superintendent by far. That's the role of a school board. That's the most important singular role as a community voice. Ideally, you go and visit the schools and you take the person out to dinner and all of these things. But we just, that was not feasible. So we did what we could. And I feel as though we've got a great, a great candidate, a great person.
How nervous does it make you that you have now hired a person for three years at a high salary who you have never actually been in a room with?
Not nervous, because I think you saw last night, her personality really shines through. I thought she was fantastic in our school board meeting. You know, none of that was, none of that she and I talked about ahead of time, because again, I didn't know for sure how the vote would all go. But the fact she brought her family in and her warm smile, she's just, her personality shines through. And, you know, obviously, we checked references. I spoke to Superintendent Butner, the Superintendent of LAUSD. And I know people who know Hilda Maldonado really well. And so that all played into it. But ideally, we would have, yeah, had a few meals together before this all happened.
Well, she does have a really intriguing and interesting life story. And not just, you know, she came here as an immigrant and had to learn English. But if you just sort of track her educational development, her own education, I mean, she really, she's a grinder. I mean, she did, you know, she went to community college. And she went to, you know, she, she just has always been pushing and striving to improve and advance her, her own education.
I know. She's right now finishing her PhD at Loyola Marymount. She finishes next June. And she's just in the writing phase right now. But she wanted to make sure that we were okay with the fact that, you know, she's still finishing her PhD. So she'll be Dr. Maldonado if all goes well. And she's done all these programs at Harvard and that's taken her abroad. And she did, just did a leadership seminar at Stanford, these professional development type things. So she's, she's a lifelong learner. You can see that in her and in her responses to things. It was a beautiful combination of life experience and intellectual study on topics I found in her, in her interviews. And we, as she said, we asked her tough questions. There was many hours of interviewing.
All right, let me, let's go back to the three points you mentioned, pandemic, community and equity. And I'm going to take them in reverse order. I don't want to, you know, relitigate the Matuoka administration, but equity was also a huge priority with him, the priority, the top priority. What's going to be different about the approach she brings and the, I would say, marginal at best results that came out of, you know, the equity emphasis that we've had for the last three years?
Expertise. So she, again, hasn't just lived this life story. This has been her work. And there's, there's academic rigor around these topics. It's, I don't belittle it. It's not, it's certainly not my background and it's not my expertise. But, but it's one thing to care about it, which we do. And it's another thing to actually understand how do you, how do you actually, this so-called achievement gap, how do you break it? It's hard. Otherwise, we'd be doing it, right? People care. There's no lack of intention or commitment or compassion around the fact that the truth is, our Caucasian students do much better across the board than our Latino ones. And it's not because of capability. It's because of...
And also the, the English learners versus the native English speakers is a huge gap.
Right. And, and you know, we, it, it's important to know that English learners in our district, it's not some sort of fringe group. This is mainstream. Nearly half of our student population are English learners, meaning that they were learning English as their, as a second language at some point in their K through 12 education. And again, there's academic rigor. There's, there's innovation. There's programs that are working. She's been in that mix. Like she's been in that field of study, practically implementing it, but also learning about it for a long time, for decades. And so I believe that that application, she's done it at LAUSD. Certainly, they still have a lot of challenges there, but she's made real strides in, in Los Angeles. And I'm, I'm confident, I'm hopeful that she'll do it here.
Yeah. I'm a little behind on my pedagogic reading. So let me, let me ask sort of a dumb question.
You can use the word. You can use the word. I'm not even brave enough to use that word in school board meetings.
Okay. So, so a couple of weeks ago, the board approved the meta-program, Multilingual Excellence Transforming Achievement, and also put in place a, I guess, is it dual-language immersion or bilingual program at McKinley?
Yep.
Now we have Ms. Maldonado who's coming. And if you look at her, her work, it really is focused on this area of bilingual, language immersion, multilingual, all of these things. So is this a tweak to the, to the equity approach? Or is this like a whole new pathway in terms of the very strong emphasis on the role of language and, and, and learning languages, not just for English learners, but also, for example, for Caucasians whose English might be their primary language, but would also be getting a second language? Is, is it a whole new approach? Are, are you just kind of turning in the road a little bit?
Well, we're turning slowly. So it's a, it's a shift. You can't just flip a switch and become...
A slight shift is a shift?
Because, and you bring up, I mean, you know, I mean, you're, what you wrote in your piece on Hilda is, there's been such a movement recently. And all of the science shows that the implications for all, for everyone are beneficial, not just for the English learners, but for English speakers across the board, socially and emotionally, in other areas, in math. I mean, it just, if the more that you're fluent in other countries, this is not even a question, right? It's just, it's just reality that you would be raised in at least two languages, maybe three, maybe more. But here, we have sort of these hangups and cultural questions still around the benefits. But the benefits are clear of this kind of education. I wish that my son had it. That, you know, if you're learning two languages in the, in the formative years where your brain is growing so dramatically, it benefits you across the board in all areas of, of both your academics and your, your social understandings.
So this 110-page game plan strategy that you adopted, the meta-plan, does that foresee, you know, much broader implementation of this throughout the district in terms of these different language programs?
Yeah, I hope so. I mean, it's, again, you don't want to foist anything on anybody. And so that's why it's been very methodical. And even the transition to, at McKinley will be over, you know, eight to 10 years, right? So, I mean, it's not something, like I said, you're just going to happen overnight. And people, the community needs to feel really comfortable, not only comfortable, but excited. And so there's been all of these ways to do outreach. Obviously, it's more challenging now. But we see with Adelante, our one dual-emergent school, the only one that we have in the district, a charter school. You know, the waitlist is a mile long. People from all economic levels and all languages are craving this type of education. And Santa Barbara, in my opinion, should be the place that's not just providing it, but actually leading in that direction.
And remind me just, so Adelante is now being advanced to junior high, to middle school? Is that correct?
That's the plan. So the plan is, we have this, this, this dual-emergent school on the east side. Again, it's a charter, but to also offer one in elementary on the west side, which is McKinley, has been the designated choice. And then Santa Barbara Junior High would be the first secondary school to have dual immersion. But again, you need this, the students need to come through. You start at, you start in kindergarten and then they need to work their way through. And, and then eventually a high school.
So, so if there were results to be gleaned, dramatic results from this approach, then those would be the two control groups, I suppose, that you could look at to see. So we'll be able to tell in eight or 10 years. Okay. Last thing on equity. Now, as you know, you know, it's sometimes at school board meetings, the word equity is sort of tossed around as, not an insult, but it's just, it's, it's seen as sort of the opposite of excellence, that somehow we're spending all this time on cultural competence, equity, these things, instead of basic literacy, for example, which is one of the things we hear a lot. Are you at all concerned that the parents, very vocal parents, fair education and other groups that have been very distrustful of the equity priority are going to say, oh, no, here we go again? Or, or, you know, not really give a fair look at this?
I hope not. I mean, I hope that they see the opportunity with our new leadership, with a new superintendent. For me, it's never been a choice. You can be equitable and you can have excellence. They don't, it doesn't need to be a choice. And we get bogged down and sort of, I think unnecessarily. And that's how I, in speaking with our new superintendent, that's her view as well. And that's what she spoke to last night. So let's hope not, that it doesn't, is seen as sort of a trade-off of some sort, because it doesn't have to be that way.
Well, and I, and I think one of that sort of transitions into your other point about community, about her skills in interfacing with groups in the community. Again, you know, not to belabor the point, but you know that in these big institutional jobs in Santa Barbara, you know, whether it's the police chief or the, or the school board, the superintendent or whatever, you need to be outward facing. This is a community that is based on personal relationships.
Yes.
And I would say that was not the greatest skill of, of Mr. Matuoka. Do you see her skills here? Because that, you know, it does go to the equity thing. Because rather than saying, well, this is the way we're going to do it and, you know, you go home, you know, bringing people along with it, persuading people, I think, is part of the job. So just kind of assess where she is on that, on that skill set.
Well, she's risen the ranks of Los Angeles Unified. So that tells you everything. I mean, the knives are out there. You know, it's a, it's a school board where school board members, literally, these races are contentious, three, $4 million races. I mean, it's as political as you can get. And then it's talking about people's kids. So you add this mechanism of a high stakes kind of environment, plus the most, in my experience, the most personal issues that, that tend to result in the political arena, which is about people's kids. And emotions run high. And I see in her, and I've, again, it's been verified through her superintendent, Austin Butner, that she exceeds. She does really well in an environment where you have to understand how to get things done and how to work with people, how to work with the unions, how to work with corporations. I mean, her job right now is to help bring philanthropy, nonprofits and businesses into the schools and work with them. It used to be Superintendent Butner told me that none of these entities wanted anything to do with LA Unified, because it was just such a bureaucratic mess. And so he couldn't, and he's a, you know, he's a philanthropist. He couldn't get, you know, couldn't get donations, couldn't get involvement. So her job is to sort of crack that open and be that personable. And I say that with not, not belittling. Personality is required to be that personable approach and open-mindedness so that you can attract the kind of, what I think and I know and I've experienced, the kind of offers of assistance, offers of collaboration that we have here just baked in. That's who Santa Barbara, that's who we are with all these nonprofits and all these organizations that are already working within the schools really well. But I think that we can improve on that now, especially during a pandemic, when people are really motivated.
Let's talk about the pandemic. Where are we on, you know, sort of a go-no-go decision on school resuming in the fall? Has the threshold decision been made that we are going to reopen the schools? Or where does that stand exactly?
We had a discussion about it last night. I mean, the, the, it's a moving target. And again, going back to what Hilda said in her interviews with us, we have to be flexible. We have to know that you put a plan in place and it's likely going to change, or it will change. So we have to have multiple plans and backup plans. And so right now, it seems as though it'll be a hybrid approach, meaning school will open on August 18th, but not all kids will be back in the classroom. And again, we're talking on, what day is it? May 27th? This is going to probably change a few times. But I think it's so important to look at what other school districts are doing, what they're doing in other countries. A parent of Roosevelt just sent me this interesting idea of what they're doing in Europe. And, you know, where you have elementary kids go to school for five days in a row, half their class stays home, but is participating virtually. So that time that they're at home, which would result in over a week, you can see if any of the students have symptoms of COVID. And obviously, if they display any symptoms, then they wouldn't be let back in the classroom. So, so there's so much smart thinking going on. I just want to make sure we were being as smart and methodical, but also flexible. And that's what I heard in the very tough interview questions that we asked of the candidates and where Hilda succeeded.
So tell me a little bit about that conversation that you had with her about the pandemic. And what, you know, just kind of characterize her thoughts on, on what the approach ought to be. And in other words, what are the notions that she's going to be carrying when she comes here?
Well, first of all, that it exposed the inequities that were already existing, right? The fact that so few households of lower income, lowest income families are connected to Wi-Fi. So if we move into this digital learning space, first and foremost, you have to make sure that kids are connected. So at Los Angeles Unified, I think their numbers were roughly around 60% were actually connected when they, when, when school let out in March. And now they're at 98%. And that was what she was focused on and has been focused on. So that's number one. And she spoke a lot about that and sort of the specifics around how you actually do that. And not just making sure that there's Wi-Fi, but here, we're trying to work with Cox to make sure that there is. But also that, you know, at home, there's some support so that, so that parents who might not themselves be connected, understand at least some basics about how to help their kids if, you know, if the Zoom isn't loading up and things like that. So really providing some supports. And she is also overseeing a hotline, a way in which families can connect with any kind of questions, whether it's tech, technology related or mental health related. There's so many things. So the connection piece is number one. And she presented a 30, 60, 90-day plan in our interview process that was impressive. And it, because it also was connected to a vision. And it's something I share, that we want to come out of this stronger. We want to have the fact that this pandemic has really shined a light on these inequities that exist in our education system and learn from them. We now know, we're learning every day and our teachers are the ones doing it, how to, how to personalize learning and education with technology in a way that we just haven't really done before. We've talked about it and certainly some teachers excel at it. But, you know, putting assignments up online isn't, isn't distance learning. It's really utilizing the way that the Khan Academy and others have been doing and are ready, ready to teach us. So I feel as though she's already getting, getting a leg up in Los Angeles at a huge scope and scale that will really help us here.
And what about the whole, you know, just, I mean, the basic stuff of reopening buildings, of disinfecting buildings, getting PPE, testing? Are we going to have, you know, what, what, what are you thinking about testing for students going back? Testing for teachers? What does that come up like?
Teachers is so key. I really am anxious for us to get the antibody test here, readily available here in this county. And I would just offer up that our teachers need to be towards the front of that line in order to get the antibody test to so that they have some certainty. I know there's all these problems with the test itself, but hopefully this, as the weeks go on, those improve. But yeah, testing is essential. And, you know, guess what? Less money. Do more with less money. We have to do all the cleaning and make sure that the environments are safe with less funding now that we just are hearing about from the state. So it's, it's daunting. There's not, there's, there's nothing about it that's not daunting. But it's in these times that you have to dig in and see the opportunities. Every crisis has opportunities, I believe. And this one, it is a Rahm Emanuel quote. He would just be shouting it at me and all the staffers.
So what kind of pushback are you getting about all this from the teachers' union? Having been a union man myself for many years, I know they just love change so much. And not only do you have change, but you have tremendous uncertainty, if not chaos, going forward. How are, how are you working with the unions, with the teachers to, to put a plan in place? And, and what do you foresee Ms. Maldonado's role there?
Well, yeah, I mean, you, if you stick around to the, sort of the tail end of the meeting last night, we approved a contract with, working with the teachers on some, some assistance for teachers, working with the union, I should say, on assistance for teachers on distance learning and how to, how to really use these new tools. Not every teacher is at the same level. And that's the immediate goal, is to bringing some teachers who want, want to be more up to speed, more fluent online with the new programs that exist. So that was the first thing. We just voted in last night, a program, a year-long program to work with experts for teachers who really need that sort of professional development. And that's can happen over the summer.
Okay. Now, we have this huge budget deficit in Sacramento, $54 billion by the governor's calculations, which of course, does not affect our Santa Barbara Unified as much, because we are a basic aid district. But nonetheless, I would imagine you're going to be facing some red ink. What's the status of the budget?
I mean, we're in better shape than, than most, because again, the term "basic aid" is so confusing. But, you know, our, just to explain it, our revenue base is not based on the funding, a proportion of the funding from the state, but rather on a direct percentage of the property tax. And so that insulates us slightly. And, you know, we've, we're, we have reserves. And this is what reserves are for. And our reserves are healthy. We are in a slight deficit, not slight, I shouldn't say slight. It's, it's in the millions. But it's been reduced in the last several months under Superintendent Matuoka. And it's going to be tight. We know it's going to be tight. And it's also a moving target. So because things are changing. Funding is still coming through from the federal government. They're still working on different relief packages. I'm just, you know, we're, we're taking it as it comes and see what the actual results are. My philosophy, and I learned this phrase from Supervisor Janet Wolfe, is to keep the cuts as far away from the classroom as possible. That's, that's always what I'm looking at, is to keep the cuts away from the classroom as much as you can. And that's a challenge.
Do you expect there'll be teacher layoffs?
No. I mean, that has not been discussed at all. I should hope not.
All right.
If anything, if anything, we, I mean, we need our teachers more than ever right now. And we need more of them. I mean, that's the challenge, is how do you divide up a class in two so that there's social distancing with one teacher, right? So, yeah, I mean, we need more supports in the classroom. We, we are lucky. It's kind of a basic thing to say, but our climate is a real asset. The fact that kids can be outside. And I'm, you know, I'm, I do look forward to sort of the creativity around just that, that kind of distance learning.
All right. Just remember, the key demographic here is the grandparents who are at home when they bring all this stuff. All right. I just, that's who we're really worried about.
How's your, how's your algebra going, Jerry?
All right, look, I've spent 26 minutes on substance, enough of that. Let me ask you a couple of political questions. There are three school board seats, three of the five, up in November. Of course, there are appointed incumbents in each of them, including yourself. Are you running?
I don't know yet. I really don't know yet. I got to figure that out.
What's the, what's the, what's the deadline for registration?
Sometime in August is filing. So there's a bit of time.
So you do know that much?
I do. Yeah. I do know that. I'm thinking about it. I haven't decided. I've really been focused on this superintendent search, but I need to focus on this now.
Okay. So where would you say? 60, 40, yes? 70, 30? Where, where are you?
I don't know. I don't know.
You don't know?
You know, you are asking me after, well, our meeting was only about five hours last night, so.
But on the other hand, you're so excited about the new superintendent, obviously. I mean, and genuinely so.
Genuinely.
It is, it is a fresh slate.
I'm not just excited. I'm giddy. Giddy.
Yeah. Well, I would say you were nearly giddy, but that's just...
Nearly giddy about her. Yeah.
So I would think, you know, someone who likes policy such as yourself, you know, with, this is a, as you say, it's an incredible opportunity. So we'll look forward to that decision. And I know you'll give it to newsmakers first. All right. One more quick thing. Of course, this all really started to hit home, the pandemic, I mean, right after the election. So we never really did a lot of postmortems on it.
I know. What election? What, March 3rd? I don't know.
But we've seen at the Board of Supervisors now, ever since, you know, this, this continual overturning of the County Planning Commission on, on cannabis cultivation projects. We have, I have a big piece, we have a big piece running tomorrow for Melinda Burns on this again. Do you, you know, looking at that, do you feel that sort of affirms what your, what your critique was in taking on Supervisor Wolf?
Wow. How many minutes do we have to go? We got in front of it. It's, hey, you know, I do think special interests need to be controlled in this county. And, and we have a lot of that here. I, certainly going into November, I'm still committed to campaign finance reform here in this county. I think it's important. Obviously, with everything else going on, it's probably doesn't rise to the top of what people are talking about. But I do believe that it's an issue that eventually, hopefully soon, our county should take on and actually be a county that has limits and has an ethics commission and all the things that really, many of the things that motivated me to, to be a part of this dialogue. And now I'm, you know, I'm still part of it. And, and just, just recognizing with all the challenges that we have. And, and just, just recognizing that all the challenges that we have, it's still such a strong, wonderful community. And we've just seen it at its best in many ways in the last several weeks.
All right.
For a non-cannabis
Nice, very nice, yeah. So how's the leg? When are you going to be out walking the dog, wearing a mask and using appropriate social distance?
Hey, wearing, so I broke my ankle, wearing crutches and a mask. And it's a bit, it's kind of chaotic. But soon, hopefully soon, July 4th is my target date.
July 4th. And how's your mom?
She's doing great.
Good, all right.
A lot of time, logging a lot of time together.
We miss, we miss Oscar. So maybe we'll have him on next. All right, Laura Capps, thank you so much for spending time on this, talking about the new superintendent. And we'll talk to you soon. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, thanks so much.